Meeting is being broadcast through Milford TV and media. From the Milford Daily News, the Town Crier, and the Patch are all in attendance. If anyone would like to make a video or audio recording of this meeting, you can transmit the meeting through any medium. Please let me know. Thank you. The first action, uh, agenda item is approval of the minutes. I expect that every member's had an opportunity to read them. They have a motion please. Motion Patrick, second from Joe, all in favor. Next agenda item is announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Joe?
I'll make this real quick. I know we've got a lot of stuff to go over. I just want to say congratulations to the National Honor Society and the yacht program that we, some of us are, all of us just witnessed. Outstanding outwork with these students. It's, it's amazing. If you have the chance next year or in the future, definitely to go see it. Great time. Also, I wanted to say congratulations to Peter, the athletic director, for opening up the new Wellness Center that we all just witnessed too. Amazing work that these guys have done and put together. From lockers to now a full-on fitness center. And I just wanted to congratulate them on a good job that they've done.
Thank you, thank you. Any other member? Jen?
I just wanted to commend the Stacy Middle School on a very successful Festival of Cultures that was held last night. They, I think Kurt Shady, who was the person who ran it, said it was one of the most highly attended and highly participated in events that they've had in years. And many, many countries were represented. And it just, it's a great avenue for middle schoolers to study independently a country of their choice, to learn about a variety of cultures, and to share that. And anyone who can encourage middle schoolers to study on their own and collaborate on their own and share knowledge that's not for a grade or not for any other reason other than they want to participate and they want to learn is pretty incredible. A number of members were there last night, as well as Senator Ryan Fatman, who was there for the duration of the event. So it was a great, great event.
Yeah, it was very nice, very nice. Any other members? Joe?
Just along those lines, this morning, um, the Cultural and Diversity Club held a flag raising event. And it's amazing the diversity that we have throughout the entire school. I think they raised three new flags today. And just hearing some of the stories from these kids, uh, it's, they're just remarkable. Kids that immigrated here in third grade and middle school and they're going off to colleges like Boston College. It's just, it's a testament to the character of these kids and it's a testament to the programs that we offer here for them.
Mr. Chairman?
The superintendent? Good evening, everybody. We have a great evening on the agenda tonight. I don't want to start off on a, necessarily with any bad news here. The recent story with Milford High School yesterday, as many of you know. I want to actually compliment Peter Boucher, who's in the back, and Carrie Bonak and the team here at Milford High School. Because I think sometimes stories have a way of becoming very negative when, when really in effect, it's actually a very positive story. And so many positive stories this evening. But just to lay it out for everybody, public who may not be aware, yesterday we had a situation where a young male, an adult male, was, uh, was able to access Milford High School. Came in under the guise of looking to register, um, his brother for school and did so by asking, getting his way into the school by looking to see the athletic director and all these, these events that had happened yesterday. But somebody who shouldn't have been in Milford High School in the first place without an appointment was handled by staff who escorted the student to all the right places. So the student get into, once he got into the school, Mr. Boucher said, "Well, what can I help you with?" And it was about registration for school. Mr. Boucher walked him to the Family Resource Center where we handle registration. That office handled that. And then that student then exited the building and was apprehended afterwards. And the resume was apprehended because upon his entry to the school, the administration notified the authorities, the administrative team, school resource officers. So by the time that individual got from one end of the building to the other end of the building, he was already arrested at that point. So it just speaks to how effective our, um, our security is in our schools and how tight, uh, and how if someone doesn't belong in our schools, we know that and we address it right away. And I want to take what could be a very negative story, because this could happen in any school. Things happen in schools. But how you handle those and how you address them, the way you did that instinctively, is to be commended. And I just wanted to acknowledge that publicly while you're both here this evening and for the committee. But again, I don't want to belabor that. There's been so many positive things in this week alone, in the last, I say in this week, in the last three days, as members of the committee have mentioned. We've, uh, we had the Festival of Cultures, National Honor Society induction, National Art Honor Society induction and art show, grand opening of the Milford High School Wellness Center, a flag raising ceremony, and we've only just begun. And tonight, we're going to recognize some unbelievable athletes and some outstanding coaches. And the list just keeps getting better and bigger and more exciting. So I welcome all of you tonight. Thanks, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to address the committee and their guests tonight.
Thank you, thank you. Any other member? Okay, next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is anybody here to speak? Seeing nobody. Next agenda item is student and staff recognition. And the first one we have is the national champion Milford High School Varsity Cheerleaders. Congratulations. And I think I heard Mr. Boucher on the radio say a couple of times when he first got the, the text, you thought they were state champions or you couldn't believe that they were nationally. You had to check it two or three times.
I did have to check the text because I, as I've said, you know, to be Hockelock Champions, to be excellent, to be state champions is phenomenal. I have not been associated with a national championship team yet. So for me, this is new ground and I'll take it. It's absolutely awesome. I just had to, like, I had to pull over and make sure I'd read it correctly before I retweeted it, so. I had to make sure. I wanted to make sure we got that out there correctly, so.
Well, I want to thank you. Because when I first became chairman, I called Dr. Tremblay the next day and I said, "We're going to spend the year talking about all the good things that go on in the Milford public schools." And so what a blessing you are. So you want to show the video?
Sure, I, I'll turn it over to the, to the girls and, and to the Coach Johnson. How do you want to proceed? And we have, we have a video queued up.
Let's have a video.
Let me, let me.
I'm afraid of screaming ahead of time. You should have a pair of videos.
We just did the last.
Is that okay?
Can everybody say?
Does that work? Yeah? Okay.
I just want you to know, Dr. Tremblay, sitting next to me, said, "What's so hard about that?"
I did not say that.
Open it up to the members?
Oh, it's, it's just so wonderful to welcome a national champion here. It happens so seldom. And you make not only the school committee, but the entire school and our community proud. So thank you for coming in and honoring us with your presence. Congratulations with the championship. It's wonderful.
Thank you.
I'll echo you the same thing. Congratulations. That was amazing. Absolutely great job. Absolutely.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, you know, we always say you can do anything with hard work. And that is such a wonderful example of, I can't, I'd have to see that maybe 10 more times to even make sense of what you did out there. But that obviously, you did that with so much practice and so much teamwork and collaboration. So good for you. You deserved that. That was amazing. Congratulations.
Yeah, the athleticism's just, it's unbelievable. And to Jen's point, I know you've put a lot of work in over the years. And you have a great coach leading you as well. And I know she worked with a lot of the, the youth in, in the town. And it's just, has built an amazing program. And looking forward to seeing what you guys can continue to do year after year.
Thank you.
You know, I've watched numerous cheerleading performances over the past, I don't know how many years. All I can say is, you know, through Loren naturally, that was an amazing performance. I know the dedication, the commitment, the hard work that it takes. And it starts right at the top with your coach. I've seen the, the hours and hours and hours of commitment that she puts in. And I think you as a group should be extremely proud.
Thank you.
Just a question. How many of you are seniors? So you're going to do it again next year. Most of you coming back.
Yes, we just have a small token gift for you, just to, um, to be nice, say thank you and recognize your awesomeness.
Thank you.
I don't know how, if you want to come up, or we can just go onto you or?
Um, well, we also have a couple, just a couple of small things for, um, for the school committee. We have a small token of saying thank you because without your support, we wouldn't have been able to get there. As well as for Ms. Bonak and Mr. Boucher.
Thank you. So again, I'd just like to say from the, the school committee, how very proud we are of all of you. Great job going all the way to Florida and a national, winning a national championship. Just a great job. And thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care. Congratulations. Next item within the student-staff recognition is the United Way Metro West Youth Volunteer of the Year Award. Want to come forward?
Want to come out? We, we have the, the video to show, so you don't have, it's working. Unless you prefer to give your personal testimony. Can we, uh, would you mind getting the, the lights for us?
Well, the first time I ever got to help somebody, I was in eighth grade. My teacher asked me if I after to help tutor in science. So that was my first time ever volunteering. I've moved over nine times in my entire life. And, um, that's everywhere from living in foster care to shelters and, um, just different housing programs with my family. And so when we moved to Milford, it was really the first time in my life that I had something comfortably stable that was permanent.
So Tori came to us probably as a freshman and she had been jumping from home to home. And I think she just wanted to find a stable place that she could call home. And luckily, she found the youth center.
The kids that, like, I give advice to. I feel like my change that I've given to them would be to give them somebody to look up to. In the sense that no matter where they come from, it doesn't define them.
It just means the type of person she is. And just with her public community, with her positive attitude, despite everything she's gone through. I think she's an easy person that the kids can look, look up to. And she does a lot of reason for that, too.
I mean, I grew up in a family, um, there was a lot of drug use and a lot of domestic violence and things like that. So I was, I was exposed to a lot of unnecessary things as a child. And typically, when I, I took those through something like that, especially starting at an age that I was at, they usually make worse choices than choices I've made. I know that. It's a statistic, you know? And I've started that I'm not a statistic, you know?
Continuous volunteering, um, you know, she goes out of her way to come and help these. In fact, she's just an amazing girl. She's just, she's good here. She's good at school. She's out, she's out there in the community doing a good job. And, um, thank you, Tori.
And one of my long-term goals was actually making a difference. I feel like this is one of my goals, me accomplishing it at a very young age. And it makes me very happy with myself. I'm very proud of myself for this. And so I guess it means that I haven't given up. I'll keep going. My name is Victoria Williams. And volunteering with the Milford Youth Center is part of my story of change.
Want you to come on up to the table? Sure.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I had the privilege of being, um, at the United Way of Tri-County induction ceremony and was there to watch Victoria receive this, uh, this award. And, um, what I, I was so moved by the video at that presentation. I just had to bring it to the committee to see and how powerful your story is. I was concerned because our video wasn't working, uh, earlier. And Victoria would have to, had to give this testimony, which is difficult for you for so many reasons, and, um, but so powerful. And I'm so glad that you were able to share that story with the committee. So I just, I'm so delighted to have you here tonight.
Thank you.
And, uh, and your story is just such a powerful one.
Thank you.
Open it up to the members?
I brought my award if you guys wanted to see it.
Absolutely, please.
It's really pretty.
Can we pass it around at the hour?
Sure.
So she was presented with the, uh, the Metro West 495 Quarter Youth Volunteer of the Year Award, United Way of Tri-County at their annual Community Recognition Breakfast. Story of Change. And Sydney and Jen, you, you were both there as well. And, um, what would you say is probably 500 people there, really easily?
Very easily, yeah.
If not more than that.
Yeah.
And if you want to share any comments with the committee about, um, Victoria or about her story, it's pretty much said there, but.
It's, you know, Victoria's, Victoria's come a long way. We're very proud of her. We see, you know, the change that she does in, in the community. Um, you know, she brought along her mom and her little sister. She's always involved in them in everything she does. Um, and I'm sure you guys, you guys see what she does here at school, too. Um, you know, she's graduating this year. We're proud of her. And, um, we just wish her the best going forward.
Thank you, Sydney.
Joe?
I just want to thank you. You're, you're obviously helping to make a great difference in, in our community. And, and we really appreciate it. You're an excellent role model for these kids. And, um, I think a shining example of how important the youth center is to our community. So, um, continue to be involved. Continue to have an impact on some of the younger kids. Um, and, and thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add also, I'm sorry. Um, I, you know, oftentimes we hear people, um, making excuses for things and listing all the reasons why they can't do something. And it sounds like you have had many things happening in your life that would have made it hard for you and might have made it easy for you to excuse certain things. But instead, you found a way to persevere and give back to others. And it's amazing to think that you're a student in our town in this high school. You've obviously made a great contribution. Um, it seems like you have a really great future ahead of you. So congratulations.
Thank you very much. Yeah, the way I look at it is like, um, I did move a lot, but if I didn't move a lot, I would have, I wouldn't have ended up here with the opportunity. So positive side of things.
That's a great way to look at it.
Yeah.
Victoria, what kind of advice would you give to other kids who might be enduring the same kinds of struggles that you had to go through?
Oh, definitely to not hold things in. Because when you hold things in, it just makes you depressed. I would know that. The minute I started reaching out to people and looked for other ways to like, I guess, um, to give out, like, what I was feeling and stuff, I started feeling better about things. Whenever, like, you want to be creative, creativity is a great way to, like, get a release, I guess. So I guess with, like, helping, my first thing that I started volunteering with here was the Find Yourself Fridays. And it's, um, it's an event that they hold at the youth center. And it's to, like, get kids off the streets and, you know, promote, like, not using drugs and stuff like that. So when I started, like, volunteering for that and, like, seeing how it affected the kids, it just made me happy. So that was a way to, like, get away from, like, the negative energy or whatever. Yeah.
Excellent. Okay.
You know, um, Victoria, in, in the, in the video, you presented such a powerful message. You said that you don't have to be defined by your history, right? You can, you can choose to be the person that you want to be. And when I was your age, I don't know that I had the strength or the vision, um, to articulate that, to make those choices. And it's so incredibly impressive. And, and you, you really are, I mean, we're, uh, so proud to have students like you in our, in our schools and our building. You're making a difference in our community. And, uh, thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you.
You know, I can tell from the look on Sydney's face how proud he is to stand back there and, and have you here. And it's just, it's just wonderful. So thank you for coming to sit with us.
Thank you for having us.
And, you know, and, and I want to say, as you know, the youth center is near and dear in my heart, you know, being on the board of the youth center. And, uh, Sydney and I talked about one of the nights that we had to go on the Al Correa Show when we were trying to get ready for, for town meeting. Yeah, and you were there. And, uh, a little girl, uh, she's 10 years old. She's looked at Al Correa and she said, "Mr. Correa, you have to understand that, that's home to some of us." It's a powerful statement. And those are the kind of statements that come out of that youth center. You know, people like yourself, Victoria, volunteering, helping these young children. And what I say is sometimes they just need someone to talk to. They just needs a way to try and figure out a bad day. And that's what they get. So thank you for all you do down there and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And to Sydney and Jen, thank you.
Gift for you as well.
Awesome.
Next, uh, in the student and staff recognition, we have the 2015 MIAA Coaches of the Year. We have Peter Boucher. Mr. Boucher is going to come up and, uh, do the recognition for, uh, Mrs. Linda's Achilles and the boys swim coach, Mr. David Chaplin. Both 2015 MIAA Coaches of the Year.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that. So, um, different paths to this award. But, um, I will tell you that in each sport, one person rises to the top. There are literally, you know, knowing the MIA as well as I do, there are literally 80, 90, 100 folks that are put forward for this award. So we're, we're an elite company all, all the way around. But with athletics here, we're, we're certainly an elite company. Linda is the MIAA Boys Volleyball Coach of the Year. Coach Chappie is the MIAA Boys Swimming Coach of the Year. To have two at one school is, uh, pretty spectacular, to be honest with you. You know, basically what happened was with Linda, her seniors on her team approached me and said, "We, we would like to nominate her." And they started to do a lot of the paperwork for that, which I find really incredible. Because you all know how much we love paperwork, right? This is a lengthy, probably 15 to 20-page application process. This is not easy. I mean, they literally climb and dig through your history, uh, which needs to be at least 10 years of coaching, minimum. Um, Coach Chappie, you know, when I started to read about the award and start to think about our coaching staff and who would move forward, these two definitely jumped forward. I spoke to a couple of the seniors and just kind of poked around. And they were, "Yeah, absolutely." So we kept it quiet. We were able to do that. I think, um, I think it's important to talk about the fact that you have to be successful to receive this award. There's a couple of components, as there always are with some of these really high, you know, upper echelon awards. You have to be incredibly successful. I think you have to have at least like a 700-winning record, which is, is really difficult to. The longer you stay in the business, the, the harder it is to keep that sort of record. Secondly, um, you have to have a community service component to this, which, which they both do. And, and we can chat, and I'm going to sort of defer to them a little bit. And then there's a sportsmanship component that I know you hold very, very dear. You know, our principal holds very, very, I hold very, very dear. That's, you know, you go back to, I carry this around with me. It's not, it's not just tonight. You know, we talk about the championship sportsmanship. I, I, here's my speech on the other side. And I do, and I do that, you know, and it's that. I think, but what, when I think of these two, and one of the reasons that I wanted to push them forward was not only the, the, you know, we say W's. Did you get the W? Did you get the L? You know, we'll text each other, "How'd you do tonight? Did you get the W?" You know, they have a tremendous amount of W's. You have, you have a guy who's won championships in multiple leagues. You, you have a gal who's won multiple championships. Been to the big dance a couple of times, right? We have a couple of, you know, um, so that's exciting to us. He's had state championships swimming. It's just, that goes without saying with these two. But when, what I looked at was the impact that they have on kids. And I look at the kids and their programs and how they conduct themselves when they're not around. And that, that speaks volumes about who they are. Um, and, and the type of impact and the expectations that they have. Yeah, we expect them to come to practice and work three and a half hours and, right? Um, never seen anybody have that gym. But it works. And to have the time in the gym, I, I, you know, in, in the pool, I'll walk in and I'll say, "How, how far are they going today?" Because I'm not sure I would run that far. A guy who's done marathons and, you know, that was my thing. And they swim, which is, you know, arguably more difficult. So, um, I, I just really felt that they were two good candidates. They were, you know, the folks that we put forward. And to have both of them be chosen, uh, to me is just phenomenal. So I'm excited to have both of them here. And the community work that they do, the things that they've done in our community. And I'm not sure if you guys want to talk about, because I'm not sure I can give it justice. But, um, we're lucky to have them. And, and I think, um, they were doing this long before I got here. And, and I hope they continue to do it as long as I'm here, which I think will be about 19 or 20 years, as far as I can tell. So I want to keep that around. Well, we'll do one year at a time, okay? But, um, you know, we're excited for that, that relentless pursuit of excellence. And, um, you know, what I like about, another thing, not to belabor, but I'm a guy that likes to talk strategy. And I'll talk it all day long, football, it doesn't matter, bet. Doesn't make, you know, and I can tell you, in games that I've watched her coach, and I was on the deck when this guy won the league championship this year, if we didn't have these people in place, we don't win. Because I can tell you, there's 11 other coaches in the league that would have lost that. He won't say, he won't admit that. But there are 11 other coaches that would not have won with some of the moves that he made that were just way out here. That just, you know, expecting the kids to, to do things. And I've seen her make, make adjustments during the game. Some coaches just can't, they don't, they don't have the kids that are capable of doing it because they've trained them in practice. And they don't think of, of some of the strategic moves that, that these two do. That they'll implement with three seconds and say, "Hey, we got to do this." And the kids can, the kids can perform. But I really think it's the impact that they have on the kids and the way the kids conduct themselves that really, those three components were super, super important. So we're lucky to have them. We're lucky to have them. And just, we're thankful to have them, so.
Thank you.
You got it, you got it, so.
Thank you, Peter.
Good stuff.
Any, any member?
Joe?
Oh, sorry. Go, no, go ahead, Jen.
Just congratulations to both of you. And, um, you know, having two younger children, just starting out in athletics, you know, you do see the impact of coaches and the different styles and, um, the different ways of working with kids. And if you can take kids, especially adolescents, and move them forward and bring them to that point where they're champions and they're, they have that good sportsmanship. Um, and for you two to rise to that level among us, Peter said, all of your colleagues around the state, it's just so impressive. And I think tonight has been such a great showing for Milford High School. It's, it's just such an impressive district in all avenues, athletics, arts, academics. So, congratulations to both of you. You've obviously really touched a lot of children.
Thank you. Yeah, I really wish every school committee meeting could be like, like tonight.
It's gonna be.
Uh, yeah, yeah, both of you are, are obviously very deserving of, of the recognition. And, and you, you could've won this years ago. Um, you, you've had an impact on so many of our students over the years. That, that's immeasurable. Um, the, 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 you've been such incredible role model to these kids, uh, not only through your work ethic, but your character, your integrity, um, not just the kids, but other coaches in the district as well. And, and hopefully, um, you know, we can continue to have success going forward. Um, and, you know, just from what we've seen tonight, we've got some great leadership in, in place. And, um, I know we have some great athletes throughout the district. And I'm, I'm really looking forward to seeing what they can do in future years.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah, I just wanna say, um, you know, uh, I hate to say that I remember you guys coaching way back when, when we were in school, but I guess that's a cliche. Um, but just that your dedication, your commitment, your passion is certainly unparalleled. And, um, we're very fortunate as an entire system and community to, to have your efforts. And thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm the same, I echo everybody. You guys, fantastic job. And I, you know, you coached my brother and I had little taste to try to attempt to play volleyball. But I couldn't go to, to any better people. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
I have to tell you two funny stories. Um, this is Akili. I would say roughly two years ago, when Dan Seaver and Tim McManus were seniors.
Yeah.
About two years ago. And my wife called me up and they were in the playoffs here at Milford High School. And she said, uh, we're going to the volleyball game tonight. And I was like, oh, volleyball. And all I could think of was, is it volleyball? You know, I'm like, well, this is, this is gonna be exciting. But, you know, being a good sport, I said, well, okay, I'll meet you at the gym. I was absolutely blown away, blown away. I never realized the competitiveness and to watch that team. And then afterwards, watch them, I'll come over to you. And a big hug. And it just was unbelievable to me to see that, you know?
It is, it's, it is. It's pretty emotional.
Yeah, it, it, it was. It was very emotional, you know? But to watch the speed of the game, you know, and, and it just was, I was, I was just blown away by it. But then I came up to the high school, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, Joe and I, and we were doing a tour. And we ran into, uh, Mister Chaplin. And we're having a conversation. He said to me, would you like to see the pool? And I'm like, I guess I, you know, I, yeah, you, you know? I'll go take a look at the pool. I mean, you know? And by the time he got done explaining everything to us and what goes on in that pool and, and the, and the tournaments and this, I was, the safety, he talked about safety and it. I, I was the same way. I ca, I come out of the pool there. I said, I never knew there was so much to a pool. I mean, so, it's, it's through education. But I, you know, I just wanna say that to the two of you, you deserve it. You both deserve it. Watching you around children and children around you, you both deserve it. And so, thank you very much.
It's easy when it's fun, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
The facility makes it quite a, quite a thing. You ought to be commended for keeping that facility the way it is. And I'm grateful every day for Peter Filosa and then the way he manages that place. Lenny, the way he manages it, dresses it up. Um, the league comes here, we've hosted sectional championships, we've hosted state diving, we've had the Southern Conference before we moved to the HAWK. We've been in the HAWK, Amok League. Now, we've run, we stepped up and ran that. And that's one of the things that makes my job easy, is being able to walk in there. I'm not a three hour person. We can't keep a minute, three hours.
Hey, it takes its time to set up the net, break it down, count all that ball.
We have to count lane lines and all that other stuff. But, um, I'm happy to have, uh, two former Milford swimmers in the back. They didn't swim for me, but they're part of the program. Um, and Scott Harrison never missed a swim practice. I don't worry is tonight. Never missed a swim practice. Um, but thank you for honoring us. And, uh, you know, I really wanna thank every kid that ever swam a repeat or touched a wall. And they're the ones that made it happen. I never, after I left the pheno pool, I never swam a length competitively.
For Mister Chaplin.
Well, we might gym in another week when the, when college is over.
Yeah.
All the alumni come, come on back. And it's great to see them all.
Yeah.
We still have a few playing right now at the college level, which is kinda nice. And.
Yeah.
Well, the kids we've sent to college, you got, you know, I understand we have captains at UConn, big, uh, Big East Freshman of the Year and Sarah Kearns. Uh, captains of swim teams all throughout New England. Got Kevin Bradley swimming at the University of Notre Dame right now. Alumni Matty Gogger was, um, a freshman of the year at Central Connecticut. And in her league, almost, she missed a state record a year ago by two one hundredths of a second. And I think she, you know, we've had great kids. And we gotta, the facility is second to none.
And I, I think.
And I never had an athletic director that said no. Never won.
So, thanks for your support, Peter.
And that's always an easy part.
Yes, thank you, thank you for your support as well. And I don't know, I, I think the most, the, the nicest thing about coaching is, uh, when you see the friendships that the, that the kids develop with one another. I mean, if you, I have Andrew Mynne, and he, he's my assistant now. And I go back to his year. And, you know, his two closest friends that came from volleyball, they are so different. They, they, they never would've found each other. In just a plain academic setting, they would never have been in, running in the same circles. And yet, when they played volleyball together, it brought them together. And now, you know, they're best men and ushers in each other's weddings. And when you see, when you see these tight friendships that they form and they continue throughout life, that's the ni, that, that's the nice part of it. It's very satisfying from a coach's perspective. Um, and you see them succeed. And you, you think that all of the lessons that they got out of playing sports, they brought into their lives. And it helped them be successful in their work, in their family lives, um, in their friendships. And, you know, everybody likes to win. But those are the, that's what keeps you coming back in, in coaching. I don't, I don't know how, how mu, how many more years I'm gonna be in.
We'll take one year, one at a time. We'll wrap up a one year deal every year. That's fine. We can.
No promises there, but, yeah. But thank you for your support. Um, you know, obviously, we wouldn't be able to do it, either of us, without your support. The support of Milford High School administration and our athletic director and most of our parents that are involved. Um, we get a lot of, uh, support. Um, and the kids just keep coming back. So, I mean, I don't get, I don't have a lot of numbers this year. But the alumni keep coming back and it's nice to see. So.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Come and, come and catch one of our matches.
Thank you for a great job.
Yeah, thanks.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll leave you with a final thought. So, you know, again, you have the, the sole coach of the year, sole coach of the year. They are now automatically put into the national coach of the year of fifty.
Oh, wow.
Clearly. So, you have one from Mass, one from Texas. Here they are. So, um, you know, it, it's just, um, you never know. But state coach of the year, league coach of the year is great. State coach of the year, that, the best of the best. And it's just, one, you know, as they keep talking, I just think of one word, passion. They're passionate about kids. They're passionate about relationships. And, um, you know, they're passionate about excellence. And that's a good place to be. So, thank you for having us today. I think it was great to have you today.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is the Brookside Memorial Elementary Schools Hand, Family Handbook and School Improvement Plan. It's all right, we'll wait.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Good night.
Good evening.
Oh.
Everybody's all smiles.
It's fun.
It's a great night.
Good stuff, nice stuff.
Entertaining.
How do you follow that?
Oh, you will, don't worry. Okay, who wants to go first?
Lisa.
Lisa's first? All right, Lisa.
Um, so I'll start with the school, school improvement plan, if that's okay.
Mm-hmm.
It, um, it stayed very similar to last year. I changed the format a little bit, um, to reflect a little bit more of the strategic plan. As far as how, um, Bob had, you know, the big headings and then the smaller, um, headings under it. So, the big things that I'm hoping to focus on this, or we're hoping to focus on this upcoming school year, um, is increasing the technology in our classrooms. We, um, we really need to, to work on that at Memorial School. So, we're hoping that with the, with this year's budget, we were able to allot some of that money. Um, allot some money for next year to start to phase in, um, some interactive technology in the classroom. So, I'm excited about, about that for, that work to start this summer. The other, um, work that we'll be doing this year is again, working on curriculum and, um, curriculum mapping. We have new science standards that are coming out that we will be working on getting, um, some mapping and some planning done for, for our schools. And again, this year, we will be continuing with our, we started our collaborative team planning time where we, just at the elementary schools this year. We started team, creating teams of teachers, um, at, at K one and two. And each of those teams were afforded a, a period a week to be able to collaborate and plan together and, um, develop interventions for students. And then also a common intervention block for those, for students that they work with. So, that, that will be, can, continue into next year. And something that we will continue to monitor its success. I think that so far, the, the feedback has been very positive about that opportunity to collaborate with one another. As well as the, the, um, because they were able to collaborate and create, um, work together on interventions. We saw far less, um, far less children being brought to our, um, start process, which is, you know,
Prefer process.
A, a process before possibly going for a special education evaluation. So, we, because we were talking about these kids every, or they were talking about the kids every week in, in teams. And then that would be brought forward, um, in a team binder that, that Rachel and I would review weekly. And Rachel had a, a case management team that she would meet with weekly. And we would talk about all of those kids every single week. About what we were able to put in for interventions and what was successful. And, you know, we had so many kids that we were able to say, okay, hold, hold what we're doing. And the interventions are working. And, um, so I think we were really pleased with, with the results of that. And we'll continue to look at that. And, and, um, make improvements to that process moving forward. And, um.
And to piggyback on, on that at Memorial, Brookside had, has done the same thing with the grade level teams. And that has afforded teachers to come together that normally would not have happened. And that came with the scheduling that happened over the summer. Providing these teams with common planning blocks, uh, once a week to meet. So, not only is the teacher teaching their twenty-two students in her own practice, she's able to collaborate with three, four other teachers on that team, in that grade level, under an, an ELL classroom or SPED classroom to share ideas. And the amount of referrals to the start process has decreased, which is, is excellent. Because the students, the staff get to feed off each other, come up with ideas, try interventions. And meet as a small team, um, together, um, with their initiatives. So, I have found that the, the start referrals have decreased, um, significantly.
I think that was it for, for the school improvement plan, as far as any real big new initiatives. If, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any for the school improvement plan.
Any member have any questions? It's very well aligned, this team, guys.
Yeah.
As always, yeah, it's very well thought out and, and perfectly presented. So, I.
Well, he gave us a map, so.
Yeah. Google.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, just to commend both schools for that work with RTI.
Sure, go ahead.
It's just such an arduous process to really think about what do children need? And how do you take exist, existing staff and try to reallocate those resources? And looking at that data and then helping teachers, and really especially at the K one, two level where they're not used to looking at data. And it's, it's just, it's still a relatively new process. And to really help them collaborate and figure out a roadmap for improvement and to review those results. It, it's very time consuming, but it's so valuable. And, uh, just, you know, I, I commend all three of you for doing that in the school. And I'm sure Donna too. It's, it's great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Do you wanna go into handbooks? Or do you wanna, do you have anything to add?
Actually, we're gonna make, we're gonna take a motion to accept your, uh, your hand.
So, Richard.
Second by Joe, all in favor? We're all set.
So, we're going to the, the Brookside?
Yeah.
Um, along with the, the, uh, grade level team meetings, um, we've also looked at, at scheduling in our, at the K one, two level, similar to the Woodland schedule. And, um, we've found some pros and cons with that. With, um, the, the common planning time worked out tremendously with, um, at the elementary level. But the, we tried this, a rotating schedule, um, similar to Woodland, but not as, um, involved. And we've got, I've got some, had some feedback from the grade level teams, um, that it works in some respect. One of the ideas was to, were to rotate the ELA and math blocks so that students who are consistently coming in tardy or late would not miss the same subject matter every day if their ELA blocks were altered, you know, from Monday through Friday. And that has had, uh, an effect on their participation in ELA. Um, so, we're, we, I would like to reexamine the rotation schedule at the kindergarten level and the first grade level. Because I think I have found this year with the feedback from the staff, that, um, it might not be as conducive to the younger grade levels, uh, of K and one, um, as it is with second grade. So, that's something I'd like to look at with the grade level team meetings. And as far as the, the, um, continuing work on the, uh, teaching strategy goal with, will, uh, be, um, determined about what the DESE says about the full-time kindergarten grant. Um, and one other thing that we had at Brookside was to, um, try to provide in the facility, was to try to provide some shade at the, in the playground area. Um, which is difficult. If any of you know the Brookside layout, it's, it's all pavement. And there's a playground that, um, rests at the far end of the play area. And the car rider line goes around the entire building. But it's all flat pavement. And when it's seventy-five or eighty degrees out there at lunch recess with six, seven year olds running, um, they, they just sweat. And there's, when the sun is high in the sky, there's absolutely no shade afforded to them. So, I've had a discussion with my school council to, um, try to provide a sh, a shaded area that would not involve popping up one of those portable gazebos, which would have to be put up and taken down every day. Um, we're looking into a, an independent structure that's the least expensive, that would survive, um, public use as well. Maybe a four column, a four pole system with a tarp that can be put over it, which is, can be taken in and put up for maybe, um, April to October. Um, and that's something that we, we talked at our school council meeting. So, that's a work in progress as well.
Okay, we need Patrick back to take, take the role.
Okay, I just need a comment before I go back.
Sure, yeah.
Um, you didn't touch on it, um, in your presentation, but in there, I noticed you had something about a presentation for parents about the Common Core and,
Yes.
um, some kind of an evening presentation. And.
Yes. And I, I kept it in there from last year's, um, school improvement plan. Because last year, my school improvement plan last year was practically all new. Um, brand new, not only is the, the layout, the physical format like, um, Lisa had mentioned. But, um, a lot of new initiatives that we undertook at the school. And, um, one of the things that I had not got, we had, we had a music in our schools night. I would, really would like to, um, have teachers an opportunity to present a subject matter and have a parents' night. Um, so that they can see what is, uh, taught in our school at Brookside School at the K one, two level and have a curriculum night to demonstrate that. We had, um, we had pages. have pages popcorn and pajamas, which is a great evening where the staff dress up in paj, you know, wear the pajamas and read. It's a huge success.
Mm-hmm.
And we have music in our schools night, but I'd like to extend it a little bit more to have, uh, like a forum for parents to come in and see, um, everything that's presented at our school level, the K one, two level. They would, I think they would be pleasantly surprised at, um, the, the curriculum content that is taught to the children that are five, six and seven years old. Um, in, in math alone, or the second graders, I, I don't want to date myself, but I will. Um, the second grade curriculum is doing things that I think I did in seventh grade.
Mm-hmm.
And I didn't get it when I was twelve years old, but it's, but the, the curriculum is ama- amazing. So I really would like to showcase that next school year.
Yeah, I, I think that's terrific that it's in there. And I think anytime you can invite parents for something that's curriculum-driven. It seems like with all of our schools, you could be out every single night at an event in Milford. There are so many, our schools are so welcoming in that regard. Um, so I think something like that, um, would be really appreciated. And even something, um, s- maybe smaller than that, that might be, um, helpful to parents is even just a snippet in the newsletter about something that has to do with curriculum. Because if you couldn't make that night or something, just something little, uh, maybe on a monthly basis or every other month.
Sure.
Um, because there are so many things that are changing and it's impossible to keep up with them even when we work in the schools, but for the parents, it's, it's impossible.
We try to post a lot of, we try to post a lot of activities on our, uh, Brookside PTO Facebook page of projects and, and the, like the arts and, um,
Yeah.
musical programs that we have. There's photos that are taken, uh, but that's a great idea. I do want to showcase the hardware that the teachers do.
They're doing so many things. Yeah, it's great. Thank you.
Joe?
So, one question. Lisa, can you talk a little bit more about the, the social and emotional programs that you want to put in place? I mean, we talked about providing a couple of presentations throughout the year to family members.
That would, um, follow, that would follow the, the same curriculum. But I would have our school adjustment counselor, um, basically showcase the bullying prevention or the, uh, stand-up to bullying, um, curriculum that we do at, uh, Brookside School to see the programs that she, um, implements along with the PBIS program that we have, um, at Brookside. Um, they're great. Uh, the PBIS program alone does many wonderful things, um, with blackout bullying, stand-up to bullying, um, social, uh, skill groups that the school adjustment counselor hosts and, uh, plans in, in her, um, practice. Um, things of that nature that I would like to showcase. I can't, we can advertise, uh, or showcase a lot of those programs, um, under that, um, the curriculum, you know, showing off the curricu- like, under a curriculum night as well.
Okay. So it's really just highlighting the programs we have in place for the kids. It's not necessarily educating families and parents, I think, some of the poor.
Yeah, again, showing off what's done in that, what's done in the building.
Okay.
Any other member? Can I have a motion to accept the Brookside handle?
Motion.
Joe, second by John, all in favor? Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, I just, good comment.
Yes, absolutely.
I, I just wanted to, um, acknowledge the, the consistency across both schools. I know it's so hard when you're working to have two, to have some autonomy of being your own K through two school, but at the same time, being one of two in a district. And so this, the parity, and, and I think you've done well, very well, working together to, um, to make that happen. It's clearly evident in the improvement plans. You've presented the alignment with the district strategic plan and for those members in the committee who are in contract negotiations. And here, some of the concerns that have been expressed in those negotiations around professional development needs, it's all addressed here. So it's, it's, everything is speaking sort of the, to the same points that have been made in every document we've seen. That's very refreshing for me to see and, uh, very well done. So I just wanted to, to comment on that. I know how difficult it is, having been at Memorial School, uh, for that time and working with a couple of principals at Brookside over the years. It's a lot of work to align those two schools and, um, I think you've done well.
Thank you. I know it wasn't my turn anymore for school improvement plan, but I did want to just say, I did want to just say that, um, we are working really, um, hard, both, at both schools, I know, because we just talked about it today with, um, we're working hard with Jen Lancaster on our ELL programming, um, for our students at, at both schools and trying to, um, meet the DESE requirements with existing staff that we have with, with increasing numbers of students, um, whose, whose first language is not English. So, um, at both schools, that, that will continue to be something that we'll, we'll continue to work on, changing, you know, we're, we're both kind of a de- uh, changing our programming a little bit to better meet the needs of those students. So, um, that will also be a big, a big piece moving forward for us. I know it wasn't my turn anymore, so I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. No, no.
Um...
You want to do your, your school improvement?
Sure, um, for handbook, for our handbook.
Handbook, I'm sorry.
So I, again, I think at both schools, Lisa and I spoke, the, the big changes or the only changes primarily to our handbooks this year were the policies that came forward, um, from central office. So the, the head lice policy is a change that's there with, that's in both handbooks, that's in red. The memorandum of understanding through the Milford Police Department is, is new to, or a change. And also the updated bullying policy are new this year in both handbooks.
Mm-hmm.
Did I miss anything?
The, the in-school suspension, uh...
In, in-school suspension as well, updated in the, in our handbooks.
Are both handbooks k- kind of the same? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're...
They should be almost identical. They're very, they're very close, if not.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Did it as a family handbook for both schools.
Send a motion on both together.
Yep, sure.
Yeah. Can I have a motion to, yeah. All in favor? Nice job. And to your comment about the ELL, I, I, I think you do an outstanding job. And today at the, uh, raising of the flags, the culture of the flags was an example of what, one of the, uh, speakers was a young man from South Korea who came here. Jen told me in third grade, didn't speak a word of English and, uh, just got a full four-year ride to Boston College. I mean, just didn't hear his story. And he ta- and I talked to him afterwards and he said, the Milford Public Schools and the people that took the time to work with him, you know? He s- he said, I'm a good student, but he said, but there were people there to work with me. So you do do a good job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Pat?
I, I want to comment, it's not for Lisa or Rachel, Lisa, it's actually for Bob. As I have, um, this time of year for the past several years, so let's keep an eye on the enrollment in, in both of those grades. We make sure that kindergarten classes in, in both of the buildings are approximately the same size and the same for, especially as we go into this very challenging time of year and we know that we'll have a lot of new students showing up on the first day of school, which I've witnessed several times.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll make sure we keep an eye on that, stay abreast of that so we don't get caught by surprise. And we have it in a couple of years, so.
Yeah, absolutely will. Very good.
Thank you.
I meant to mention this earlier at announcements. I, I, I have it here. I, I got an email from Diane Pinto about the American Heart Association. This was great news. I meant to mention with Peter was here as well, but just to share with the committee, there was a fundraiser that was done for the American Heart Association at the elementary schools through the, uh, elementary physical education team. And as I understand it from, from Diane, this is the Jump Rope for Heart Program.
Mm-hmm.
Woodland School raised eighteen thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars. Brookside School raised thirteen thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars. Memorial School raised seven thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars. So for a total amount of forty thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars raised with the American Heart Association of the three elementary schools, so.
She did an incredible, unbelievable.
Just terrific job.
She came in and said, uh, she said, Lisa, I have five thousand dollars. I said, that's fantastic. She goes, um, I'm getting nervous. And then a couple of days later, she goes, it's up to eight thousand. And as the monies kept increasing, when she reached twelve thousand, I said, Diane, I don't think I've ever heard of any fundraiser getting that high. She was nervous about that, but what an accomplishment with, um, so many students participating, raising that much money across the three elementary schools. A fantastic job.
That's great. Well, we're very proud of.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
That was great.
Joe, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice evening.
You too.
Okay, the next agenda item is the subcommittee, um, assignments, which you all already have. I sent them to your, to Melissa. Melissa sent them out to you. Um, but for the viewing public, I'll go through them. Um, one thing that I've done is I have done away with the athletics subcommittee. I feel that Peter Boucher is doing an outstanding job. Uh, hit the ground running, uh, just some of the things that you see around the school, uh, that he does on a daily basis. So I, I just felt that, you know, we didn't need the athletics subcommittee. Um, so on the policy subcommittee, I kept Joe Marias, I kept Jen Parsons and Patrick Holland. I had a conversation with Patrick, um, because Patrick serves two other pretty important roles. And, uh, I said, do you feel that you still want to be on the policy subcommittee? He was very proud to serve with the both of you and felt that the three of you make a really good team, uh, bouncing ideas off of one another for policy. So the policy subcommittee will remain Joe Marias, Jen Parsons and Pat Holland. Um, the middle school east reuse committee, um, I left, um, Scott, uh, on that committee. I felt that they've, you know, they've been involved probably over a little over a year now, a year and a half. I, I felt it wouldn't be fair to reassign somebody new to go into that committee and have to start fresh. So I figured I, that I left him there. He had showed, uh, asked me if, if I would do that and I, I said, yes, I would do that for him. The, uh, technology task force, I assigned, um, John Erickson and Joe Calery to that, to work together. Um, I reached out to Kathy. Uh, we feel that the first school that's going to be a challenge is going to be at the high school. It's going to be a, a big project, so I felt that there should be two of you on that committee. Uh, the Woodland Building Subcommittee, I left Patrick Holland on that. Patrick, you've been involved in it since the groundbreaking or from day one, I should say. You've done a great job. And, uh, again, I wouldn't want to have to shift somebody into that position now with what's going on and have to start fresh. Um, so I left you there. And I kept the wellness committee. I'm going to stay on the safety and wellness committee. So that's, those are the committee assignments for this year. Um, and then what I did with the school liaison, uh, I kind of piggybacked some of them. Um, Patrick, I, I gave you the Woodland School. I feel that it's very important that you be involved with the Woodland School that's presently running and hopefully will be transitioning into the new school. So I asked you to stay at and be the liaison at Woodland School. I did the same with Scott. I asked Scott to take the middle school because he's on the middle school east reuse committee. I said, I'd like you to be in, um, the middle school east. Um, with John Erickson, I asked John, uh, seeing that we feel that being on the technology committee and we feel that the high school is going to be the first spot we're going to start, I assigned John to the high school, um, to be the liaison at the high school. I figured the two of them go together, you know, uh, very, very importantly. Uh, Jen Parsons, I assigned to Shining Star. Um, you'll enjoy it. It's a labor, it's a labor of love. I've had them twice. Um, Joe, uh, Calery, so I assigned the Brookside School Elementary School. I think you'll do a great job there. And I took Memorial. So, so those are the, uh, the subcommittee update, updates in the, uh, school liaisons. So, and like I said, everybody knew them ahead of time. I just wanted to announce it for the general public. So, um, the reason, um, that we brought the liaison program in, it was under, uh, Mr. Mazakelli. Uh, we used to all go to the opening day of school and it was like, you know, the, the, here comes the FBI, you know, and it was very, very overwhelming. And so what we decided to do when we set up this program is, you know, feel free to be there on opening day at your school, you know, feel free to reach out to the principal, make appointments, go there, you know, and, and, and walk around and visit with them. And, and some of you, that the reason I put your schools together was to try to cut down maybe on some of your downtime. If you're going to go there anyway for a meeting for the Woodland, say, uh, subcommittee, you can, you know, say to Craig, listen, while I'm here, let's, just to try to, you know, because this week is an example of how busy we all are. So it, it helps, it helps. So that's, that's my, uh, that was my, I thought process behind that. So, and I hope everybody's pleased.
I, I just want to say the, the school liaison, I think it's a great idea. When I had Woodland last year, the previous year, I talked to Craig and Lisa. Just getting to know everyone there, going to the PTO meetings, doing the, the other meetings that just go, it's, just to be there and see how everything works. It's, it's a huge help and, and they respect it and they love it just as well too, so.
Yeah, it shows great support.
Very.
Yeah, it does. So anybody have any questions on that or comments? No? Okay. Next agenda item, well, actually, we're, now we're going to subcommittee updates. So athletics is gone. Policy update.
Uh, we have a meeting coming up in a, in a few weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, so no updates at this time.
No update. Wellness is the same. There's no update for wellness. Middle school east, unfortunately Scott is not here this evening. Patrick, Woodland School building?
So we haven't yet met this month, or we have not, strike that. Did we, have we had a, a committee meeting since we've last met?
Uh, since the groundbreaking, we haven't.
So we, we had an opportunity to break ground at the Woodland School. Um, it was great. Actually, I was, I was expecting, you know, as every, as all the members of the school committee know, there was a lot of people there. I mean, I was expecting maybe twenty and there were probably a hundred and twenty. Um, and it was, it was great. Uh, all of our representatives showed up. Um, uh, Selectman Wilkins showed up, Selectman Bill Buckley showed up, um, Representative Fernandez showed up, Senator Fatman showed up. It was, it was just amazing to see all the community support, to stand behind that building to come and participate in that groundbreaking ceremony. Um, it was, it was great to see it sort of come to fruition. It's been, I've been working on it for five years now and, uh, it's just, it's really good to actually see shovels in the ground. Um, uh, it, it's, it's such an exciting part of this, this process and it was such a pleasure. I thank everyone that came and everyone that participated in the ceremony. It was, it was great.
Yeah, to comment on what Pat's talking about, there were so many people there. It actually, was it three? It took three pictures or four pictures?
Three, uh, three or four, yeah, three.
Three or four pictures to get all the people that were there that were involved in the, in, in basically taking, getting the school to where it, you know, where it is now, to be able to get their pictures. That's how many people were there. So it was, it was a great turnout. It was a windy, a little bit of a raw Saturday morning, but it turned out very, very well.
We actually did have, uh, I looked at my calendar, it was a few days after the groundbreaking. I knew we had a meeting, I couldn't remember if it was before or after, but discussed the colors, all the exterior colors of the building. And that was just a few days after the groundbreaking. So they all seemed to kind of run together. But we did have one meeting since that.
Yeah, and there was, there was some, some dissension around the colors of the building. Um, I was, I, I, I get very nervous about maintenance. I want to make sure that when we're building these buildings, that they're easy to maintain. Um, I know that it's very difficult for custodians to, to apply fifteen different colors, you know, on the building. And so, uh, the facade of the building is, is to break it up so it doesn't seem so monolithic is, is being assigned in several colors. And so, um, although I didn't agree with it, I relented. Um, however, I'm going to fight, fight very strongly and I want everybody here to know this, that the interior of the building is going to be Navajo white. You know, so we're going to have one interior color so we can paint it, have some accents. It's wonderful, but, uh, but that was, that's, that was more of a, uh, an internal discussion, so.
It's amazing the progress they've made in such a short period of time. When you drive by there, everything's already been cleared out and...
I understand foundation is being poured already.
Yeah.
So, uh...
It's amazing.
Yeah, really. And John, the technology, uh, subcommittee?
Yeah, there's no update at this time.
No update. Okay. Next agenda item, future agenda items. Does anybody have anything that they would like me to have added to the future agenda?
Mr. Chairman, can we jump to the Assistant Superintendent for Business report? Can we just, we glossed over that one.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, we had a couple of items.
Or, or maybe number eight.
The operating protocols?
Oh, oh, sorry about that.
I'll, I'll make this quick. This is more of a housekeeping item anyway. Um, so a- as all of you know, it, it wasn't too long ago that we, we worked very closely with the, uh, the MASC to, to draft some operating protocols for, for the school committee. Um, at the time, the, the committee as in place signed off on the operating protocols. But now that we have a new member, it's a new year, um, it's an opportunity to, again, review the protocols and, and as a committee sign off on them. And they're essentially just, uh, you know, for, for John's sake, um, they're really just a, a guide for us to use in, in how we, how we go about our business and how we interact with each other and how we interact with the staff and the administration, um, and, and the decision-making process. So, um, it's something that other communities do as a best practice and we felt that it, it would add some value to our committee as well. Um, so I'll pass this around, have everyone sign it and then we'll get it uploaded to the, the website.
Okay.
I don't think it needs a vote or anything.
Nope. Sorry Kathy, I skipped over you. I got so excited about the subcommittees, I went... I saw you and Kevin talking, Kevin saying, he's really trying to get out of here. No, that's not the case. Thank you, Joe. Okay, so we'll go to agenda item number nine, report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources.
Uh, for the committees approved this evening, we have six warrants. The first warrant is in the amount of thirty-one thousand two hundred and seven dollars and six cents.
I have a motion from Patrick, second from Jen, all in favor?
The second warrant is in the amount of seventeen thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and six cents.
I have a motion from John, second from Joe, all in favor?
The third warrant is in the amount of two hundred thirty-eight thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents.
I have a motion from Jen, second from Joe, all in favor? I have a motion from Jen, second by Joe. All in favor?
The fourth warrant is in the amount of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and three dollars and seven cents.
And a motion from Patrick, second by Joe. All in favor?
The fifth warrant is in the amount of three hundred sixty-four thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-five cents.
Motion from Jen, second by Joe. All in favor?
The last warrant is in the amount of two hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents.
Motion from John, second by Joe. All in favor?
There is a FY fifteen budget update for your review. I will let you know that I am concerned about our utility, um, costs at this point. However, we will be putting, or I have put a budget freeze on the remainder of the school year, and we will capture the, um, final dollars in the, uh, remaining materials and, um, other expense lines that can make up that deficit. But it is approximately projected to be about seventy thousand dollars, but I think we'll be able to acquire that within our own budget. And that, as of right now, is the only concern in our FY fifteen, um, budget.
And I'm sorry, Kathy, you said transportation?
Utilities.
Utilities.
I also have for the committee's approval this evening, a, um, a list of the latest appointments since our li- last meeting, and there is no, uh, vote required. It is for your information only. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, and how we go to agenda item eleven? Does anybody have any future agenda items they'd like to have added to a future meeting? Any old business? We, we'll be having an executive session tonight, so. Can I have a motion for adjournment? John, second from Joe. All in favor? Good night, and thank you.